This is the plenary hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of Journal Number 8 dated August 13, 2024, were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading thereof and subsequently to approve the said journal. I sumo, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The reading of the said journal is dispensed with and Journal Number 8 dated August 13, 2024 is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with additional reference of business and for this purpose my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills on resolutions on first reading as well as communications and resolutions. Sumo, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Additional reference to business. Bills on first reading. House Bill 10759, granting distinctive honors and privileges to national athletes, creating a national endowment fund for sports heroes by Representatives Tofu Ralph Wendell, Tofu Joseline, and Tofu Irwin.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 10760, to create the Reservists and Reserviced Administrators Federation of the Philippines by Representative Romero.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 10761, granting Philippine citizenship to Matthew Steves Westfall by Representative Dohavid.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 10762, strengthening the legal staff of the DOJ, renaming it as the Office of the Chief State Council by Representative Jaresco.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 10763, granting Philippine citizenship to favor Ogechukua Uno by Representative De Faustino Michael Carlos.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 10765, granting additional retirement benefits to barangay officials and workers by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 10766, increasing the term of SK members from three years to six years by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 10767, increasing the term barangay elective officials from three years to six years by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 10768, regulating the ownership and operation of drones by private persons by Representatives Tofu Joseline, Tofu Irwin, Tofu Ralph Wendell, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 10769, institutionalizing a national medicine system in the Philippines by Representatives Tofu Joseline, Tofu Irwin, Tofu Ralph Wendell, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 10770, fixing a new term of office for barangay officials by Representative Cruz Ambrosio.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 10771, reapportioning the lone district of Magindanao del Sur into two legislative districts by Representative Paglas.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Resolutions. House Resolution 1936, urging the House of Representatives to increase the budget of the Philippine Coast Guard for the fiscal year 2025 to provide for the improvement of its communication system by Representative de Lo Santos.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Resolution 1937, commending and congratulating Filipino gymnast Carlos Yulo for his exemplary performance in winning two gold medals in the 2024 Paris Olympics by Representative Marquez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution Numbers 1938 and 1939, commending and congratulating Filipino boxers Nesti Petesjo and Ira Beliegas, who are winning bronze medals in women's featherweight division and light flyweight division respectively in boxing at the 2024 Paris Olympics by Representative Marquez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1940, honoring former House Speaker Jose de Venetia Jr. for his distinguished service and outstanding contributions to the country by Representative Rodriguez Ruffus.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1941, congratulating and commending Carlos Yulo for winning two gold medals in the 2024 Paris Olympics by Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1942, urging the House to recommend and request the Communelect to reschedule the filing of certificates of candidacy for the May 2025 midterm elections to December 1 until December 8, 2024 by Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Resolution 1943, commending Filipino Olympians Ira Beliegas and Nesti Petesjo for their respective bronze medal finish in women's boxing and exceptional contribution to Philippine sports in the 2024 Paris Olympic Games by Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1944, recognizing, congratulating, and commending golfer Ian Maliksi for winning the 2024 U.S. Women's Amateur in Oklahoma, USA by Representative De Faustino Michael Carlos.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1945, urging the DEP to develop and implement a comprehensive master plan to address the nationwide classroom backlog and ensure adequate, safe, and inclusive learning environment for all Filipino students by Representative Amatong.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution 1946, congratulating, commending Jeremiah Auzha for winning silver medal at the first International Nuclear Science Olympiad in New Clark City, Pampanga from August 1 to 6, 2024 by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution Numbers 1947 and 1948, congratulating and commending Muhammad Nur Gumaos Kasib and Neil Kyle Olair Maniques for winning gold medals at the first International Nuclear Science Olympiad held in New Clark City from August 1 to 6, 2024 by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 1950, directing the Committee on Justice and the Special Committee on Creative Industries to investigate the issue of sexual abuse of showbiz talents by Jojo Nonés and Richard Cruz in relation to sexual crimes perpetrated in the entertainment industry by Representative Goles.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution Numbers 1951 and 1952, commending Neil Kyle Olair Maniques and Muhammad Nur Kasib for winning gold medals at the first International Nuclear Science Olympiad held in New Clark City from August 1 to 6, 2024 by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 1953, urging the House to conduct an investigation into the planned transfer persons deprived of liberty from Metro Manila District Jail Annex IV to a newly constructed prison facility by Representatives Castro, Franz, Brosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1954, urging the appropriate committee of the House to conduct an inquiry on the unfair online sales practices of offshore appliance brands shipping directly to the Philippines and enforcement discrepancies by Representatives Tofu Joseline and Tofu Ralph Wendell.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1955, directing the Committee on Energy to conduct an inquiry on the imposition of line rental charges under the wholesale electricity spot market rules causing abrupt power rate increases in Visayas by Representatives Dagooc and De Jesus.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1956, urging the appropriate House committee to conduct an inquiry on the escalating impact of African swine fever in the country by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate. Message dated August 13, 2024, informing the House of Representatives that on even date, the Senate passed the following House bills without amendment. House Bill 3971, declaring March 2 of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of La Union to be known as La Union Day. House Bill 3974, declaring August 11 of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of Samar to be known as Samar Day. And House Bill 5826, declaring September 1 of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of Bukidnon to be known as Arang ng Bukidnon.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated August 13, 2024, informing the House that on even date, the Senate passed House Bill 2665 on the proposed establishment of archipelagic sea lanes in Philippine archipelagic waters in which it requests the concurrence of the House.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Message dated August 13, 2024, informing the House that on August 12, 2024, the Senate designated Senators Villanueva, Binay, Gachalian Zubirri, and Onteveros as confers to Senate Bill 2587 and House Bill 7400 on strengthening the enterprise-based education and training framework.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated August 14, 2024, informing the House that on August 13, 2024, the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1604 and House Bill 8210 on the proposed academic recovery and accessible learning aral program.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letter dated June 11, 2024 of the Co Regional Director, Regional Office Number 4A, furnishing the House of Representatives with copies of their annual audit reports for the year ending December 31, 2023 on certain water districts.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Letter dated July 5, 2024 of the Executive Director, Toll Regulatory Board, informing the House on the updates regarding House Resolution 193.
To the Committee on Transportation.
Letter dated July 16, 18, and 23, 2024 of the BSP Office of General Counsel and Legal Services, transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Annual Audit Report on the Northwestern Mindanao State College of Science and Technology, Tangob City, Misamis Occidental for the year ending December 31, 2023.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Various communications submitted to the House by officials of certain local government units relative to their posting and reporting requirements of the fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the Local Government Support Fund as attested by the respective local chief executives.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Reports. Committee Report 1167, submitted by the Committee on Public Works and Highways on House Bill 10764.
Committee Report Number 1168, submitted by the Special Committee on Creative Industries on House Resolution 1949. Committee Report 1169, submitted by the Committees on Housing and Urban Development and Waste and Means on House Bill 10772. Committee Report Numbers 1170 to 1182, submitted by the Committees on Transportation and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 10773 to 10785 respectively.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules.
Additional reference of business. Messages from the Senate. Message dated August 15, 2024, informing the House of Representatives that on August 13, 2024, the Senate designated Senator Lauren Legarda as member of the Second Congressional Commission on Education and Edcom II.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Message dated August 19, 2024, informing the House that on even date, the Senate passed without amendment House Bill 8492, establishing the city of Victoria's Province of Negros Occidental, a general hospital to be known as the Victoria City General Hospital.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated August 19, 2024, informing the House that on even date, the Senate passed the following House bills as amended by substitution: House Bill Number 8426 and House Bill Number 9335, in which it requests the concurrence of the House.
To the Committee on Health.
Message dated August 19, 2024, informing the House that on even date, the Senate passed the following Senate bills: Senate Bill Number 2450, establishing a framework for blue economy, promoting stewardship, and sustainable development of coastal and marine ecosystems and resources.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
Senate Bill 2780, granting juridical personality and legal capacity to the board of the fund for responding to loss and damage due to climate change, in which it requests the concurrence of the House.
To the Committee on Climate Change and the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Message dated August 19, 2024, informing the House that on even date, the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 2492 and House Bill 7819, declaring the maritime zones under the jurisdiction of the Republic of the Philippines.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the business for the day. Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1934, and for this purpose my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title.
There any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 1934.
House Resolution 1934. Resolution congratulating and commending the University of the Philippines Concert Chorus for winning four awards at the Musica Obrys Prague Festival 2024 held in Prague, Zec Republic from June 27 to July 1, 2024.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1934.
As many as are in favor of House Resolution 1934, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 1934 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1935, and for this purpose my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 1935.
House Resolution 1935. Resolution congratulating and commending the Manila Symphony Junior Orchestra for winning at the 13th Bratislava International Youth Music Festival held in Bratislava, Slovakia, and the 16th Sumakumlaude International Youth Music Festival held in Vienna, Austria.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1935.
As many as are in favor of House Resolution 1935, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 1935 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may I request that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Joseph Jojo Lara of the Third District of Cagayan. They are from the local government of Amulong, Province of Cagayan, namely Mayor Elpidio Reyes Rendon, Vice Mayor Edward Martires Antonio, Liga ng mga barangay President Consuelo Magudayaw Boking, Sangguriang Kabataan President Maria Zarina May Alonso Mora, Sangguriang Bayan Member Marcian Banares Donato, Sangguriang Bayan Member Amor Morales Pazimyo, Sangguriang Bayan Member Ismael Pronto Zalun, Sangguriang Bayan Member Jan Jan Malamug, and Sangguriang Bayan Member Christopher Contilio Marcos.
We welcome our House, our guests from the local government of Amulong Province of Cagayan, the guests of the Honorable Joseph Lara. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Alfredo Maranyon III of the Second District of Negros Occidental. We have today the 2024 Protect Our Nation Youth Girls Softball Team 16 Under from Sagay City, Negros Occidental. We have officials Benson Fernandez, Angel M. Verdeflor, Luwed Lachika, Rodolfo Boytingson, Eric Hesmundo. We also have coaching staff Reggie Fuentes, Josie Sebunga, Marciano Santa Maria, Aprilisa Santa Maria. We also have players Jay Sinadín Pahotal, Janine Pahotal, Crystal Chelsea Lobaton, Christine Jane Caracas, Princess Mazzi Torre, Leil T. Baladhai, and Joylin Caballero.
We welcome the 2024 Pony Girls Softball Team 16U from Sagay City, Negros Occidental, the guests of the Honorable III Maranyon. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 7819 and Senate Bill Number 2492, declaring the maritime zones under the jurisdiction of the Republic of the Philippines. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move to ratify the said Conference Committee Report.
There is a motion to ratify the said conference report. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. All those in favor of the Conference Committee Report, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The said Conference Report is ratified. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Romanti Romulo of the Lone District of Pasig City.
Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Concurrent Resolution 31, as contained in Committee Report 1163. For this purpose, Mr. Speaker, I move that we request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved, and the Secretary General is direct to read the title of House Concurrent Resolution 31.
House Concurrent Resolution 31. Concurrent Resolution urging the President to create a Cabinet Cluster for Education to ensure the cohesive and coherent implementation of education laws, policies, reforms, and regulations among the departments, bureaus, commissions, and offices in the executive branch of government, and formulate a long-term integrated national education and workforce development plan.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 31.
As many as are in favor of House Concurrent Resolution 31, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Concurrent Resolution 31 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move to refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 1877, Inquiry on the State of Sports Development and Funding the Philippines to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. House Resolution Number 1903, Inquiry on DOF Circular Number 003-2024, which among others allows unutilized funds of the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation worth 89.9 billion pesos to be remitted to the unprogrammed appropriations of the national budget to the Committee on Health. House Resolution Number 1908, Inquiry on the Construction of Illegal Structures and Persistence of Quarrying Operations in the Upper Maritina Watershed, which potentially contributed to the severe flooding in various parts of Metro Manila during Typhoon Karina to the Committee on Natural Resources. And House Resolution Number 1912, Inquiry on Unfair Online Sales Practices of Offshore Appliance Brands Shipping Directly to the Philippines and Enforcement Discrepancies in Relation There Too to the Committee on Trade and Industry. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the aforementioned House Resolutions are hereby referred to the aforementioned committees. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move to refer the following speeches delivered on August 12, 2024 to the appropriate committees. The previous speech of Representative Tulfo to the Committee on Trade and Industry, the speech of Representative Esparres to the Committee on Transportation, the speech of Representative Castro to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, and the speech of Rep. Nagook to the Committee on Energy.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved, and the aforementioned speeches are hereby referred to the aforementioned committees. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 10730 and 10733, House Concurrent Resolution Number 31, and House Resolution Numbers 1934 and 1935, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session until 3 o'clock tomorrow, August 21, 2024. Sumo, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended until tomorrow at 3 p.m. Session is suspended until tomorrow at 3 p.m.